Ladies and gentlemen, and I appreciate all the folks that are in session tonight. But if I could please have your attention and call the meeting to order tonight and welcome you all to this regularly scheduled meeting in the Waterloo City Council this Monday, August the 12th. We have a very good crowd in chambers tonight. And also to those of you that may be watching on public access television, again, welcome to all. Madam Clerk, would you start by reading us the roll, please?
Yes.
Reading the roll.
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Getty?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Walper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Very good. If you would all please join me in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer, please. Thank you very much. The Pledge of Allegiance tonight is going to be led by our Ward One Councilmember, David Jones. David, please.
Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I'd like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda, and that amendment is an item number 20, to remove review after one year, but keep the rest of the motion the same. Also with the amended agenda, I move that we approve the minutes from our August 5, 2013, regular session.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes, either one? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda and the minutes pass. We have a proclamation tonight and a presentation. I'm going to start with the proclamation, and I know there's Dan and a couple of folks out there from the Waterloo Bucks Organization. So if you guys can come up, please. Hi, guys. Not at the baseball game right now. Yeah, Dan? I forgot your name.
Kendall.
Okay, Kendall. Hopefully, all of you guys know that the Waterloo Bucks have had an extraordinary year. We've all been following them with bated breath here lately, wanting them to get that one more win, that one more win. And we have a proclamation here tonight to recognize the Bucks and their incredible season this year. But, you know, when you stop to think about it, guys, we're so fortunate in Waterloo. We, right now, are celebrating the Waterloo Bucks. It hasn't been that long ago that we were celebrating the Waterloo Blackhawks hockey team. And the Waterloo Blackhawks, the high school team, went all the way to the national championship. We've got the UNI Panthers. We have so much to celebrate. If you're a sports nut and you live in the Cedar Valley, you've got a lot to be happy about, and you've got a lot to cheer about. We're competitive in all of those things, and we should all be very proud of that. But tonight, we're here to recognize the Bucks, and not because the season is over, for crying out loud. We're just getting started in the second half here. But this is a City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas Waterloo, Iowa is a city that loves baseball and is proud of the Waterloo Bucks baseball team. And whereas Waterloo's baseball tradition is strong, and our citizens appreciate and enjoy great baseball games. And whereas this season, we celebrate the Waterloo Bucks baseball team with the best record in their history. And whereas the team has had a great season and has once again made a run for the Northwood League Championship. And whereas we commend and thank the team, its owners and staff, and the many fans who have been involved with and support Waterloo Bucks baseball. Now, therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, in celebration of the many accomplishments of the Waterloo Bucks baseball team has had this season, do hereby proclaim the week of August 12 through the 18th, 2013, as Waterloo Bucks Week in the City of Waterloo, and invite all to experience Bucks baseball in historic Waterloo Riverfront Stadium. Dan, I'm going to give this to you, and I'm also going to give you the microphone. Maybe you'd like to say a couple of words to the folks about Waterloo Bucks baseball.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. And I'll tell you what, every year, we bring in 30, 40 kids from all over. These are collegiate kids from all over the U.S. to play in one of the most competitive leagues in the nation, in the Northwoods League. And one of the key components to put in this year's roster together is, obviously, we had a great bunch of guys. But what they do at the end of every year, they go back to their colleges and talk about how they're treated, you know, how the host families treat them, how the organization treats them, and the facilities. And really, one of the key components of this year is the facility improvements that we've had at the Riverfront Stadium. You know, the vision of past leaders and current leaders to want to revitalize Riverfront Stadium is really a key component to our recruiting. And I think we have one of the top, if not the best, ballparks in the Northwoods League. And that, after every year, those kids go home, they talk to their college teammates, they talk to other players that they grew up playing baseball with, and one of the things they talk about is facilities. And that's really a key component. So I thank you, thank the City Council for doing what they've done to Riverfront Stadium. It's helped bring us a great baseball team this year.
Very good. Thanks, Dan. Good luck. Let's cheer them on for these roster wins.
Mayor, let Dan know. Dan, I'm available any evening except Monday, so give me a call.
All right. I think we have Dale Hall and Joel Chezek out. Dale and Joel, why don't you guys come up, please? Dale, how are you, buddy? Good. Joel, why don't you get over here? You know, these two fellows, I've known both of them for 30 years, at least, because I've been here longer than 30 years, and I've known both of them as long as I've lived in Waterloo. And this is Dale Hall on my right. It was several years before I knew you had a name other than Taco, Dale. I mean, Dale is a police reserve, and just everybody knew him as Taco. And I started on the Police Department in 1980. Dale was a reserve officer when I started, and again, it was just Taco. And you could always count on both of these fellows that when we needed extra help in the Police Department, if you needed extra help of any kind, these fellows volunteered hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of hours. Certainly Taco for 33 years, 34 years, and Joel for 12 years, I believe, 13 years. Okay, I got both of them wrong, but anyway, you know, they were just always there. And both of them retired last year from the Waterloo Reserve Police Officers Association. So we thought it proper that we recognized the both of them with a couple of little trinkets here. So let me get some stuff, guys. First of all, well, I'm going to start with the certificate of retirement for both of them. It says, Certificate of Retirement, City of Waterloo, Iowa. This is to certify that Joel Chezek, having served faithfully and honorably from 1999 to 2012, was retired from the Waterloo Police Department Reserve Unit. And that's for Joel. And this certificate says exactly the same thing for Dale Hall. We also have plaques for each one of them presented to Dale Hall in appreciation to your 34 years of service to the Waterloo Police Department and the community of Waterloo, Iowa, 1978 to 2012. Signed, Dan Trowka, Director of Safety of Services. And this one presented to Joel Chezek in appreciation to your 13 years of service to the Waterloo Police Department and the community of Waterloo, Iowa, 1999 to 2012, signed by Director Trowka. And each of you get to keep your Waterloo Police Reserve badges.
Thank you.
And, you know, I don't know how you properly thank folks. I say all the time when I get an opportunity to thank all of our volunteers that volunteer all over our city in all different capacities. We couldn't run a city without volunteers. And I know firsthand how important that the Reserve Police Department, the Reserve Police Force is to the Waterloo Police Force. So having these fellows around with their kind of dedication and their service and their commitment to the city for this many years has been a real tribute to their professionalism and their attitudes, et cetera, et cetera. They've just done a fine job, and we are going to miss them on the Waterloo Police Reserve Unit. So, guys, thank you both very much. Would either one of you like to say anything?
I'm fine. Thanks, Bob.
You're fine, Joel.
Yep. We had a good time. 13 years.
It was a great time.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Right.
Guys, I always end this period with a little disclaimer, Joel and Dale, that you don't have to stay for the entire council meeting if you don't want to. You're not going to hurt anybody's feelings if you leave. If you want to stay for a good civics lesson, that's fine. If you don't want to, that's fine, too.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Mr. Greenwood, yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, this is on behalf of Councilman Schmidt, who is on vacation, but I think it resonates among all the City Council people here. And I'll read that said, "On behalf of the citizens and taxpayers of Waterloo, I'd like to say thank you to Dale and Joel for their years of service and commitment to the city. The police reserves are one of our best-kept secrets, and Dale and Joel epitomize the dedication to community policing that we all appreciate. As a big supporter of the police reserves, I hope others will be willing to step up and join our reserve force and help continue the great volunteer efforts that Dale and Joel have provided over the years." Thank you, Dale and Joel, Steve Schmidt, Councilman at Large, and I think on behalf of the other members of the City Council. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. Pretty much appreciate it. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Councilman Hart, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive, place, and file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B16. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are $3,865,210.44, 3,865,210.44.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda tonight on any items? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call. Vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I move that we receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the request for proposal for demolition and site clearance services rackham for the former Lafayette School located at 2265 Lafayette Street.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file to item number two?
Certainly do not.
We do not? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against our demolishing the old Lafayette School? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. It's a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file an instruct city clerk to open and read bids and refer to Community Planning and Development Director for review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Suzy, please. Madam Clerk, please. We are all waiting with bated breath for this. This is an important bid for us tonight. We have four bids. We have an estimate from our planning department of $500,000.
The first bid is from Active Thermal Concepts of Hiawatha, Iowa.
And the total bid amount is for $544,343.544,343.00. Second bid is from Benton Sand and Gravel Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa.
Noel, is that sweat you're wiping off your brow over there?
The bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $328,617.54, 328,617.54.
So...
Anybody? Breathe.
That's good.
Now he's kind of smiling, isn't he?
Oh, man.
The next bid is from Kelly Demolition and Escavating, Rockford, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent, and the total bid is for $172,900.172,900.00.
I wanted to say 100.
The final bid is from Lansing Brothers Construction Company of Luxembourg, Iowa. And the bond is in the form of a check for $14,165.14,165.00. And the total bid amount is $283,300.283,300.00.
Pardon our frivolity up here, ladies and gentlemen, but this was an incredibly important bid for us tonight, and we got some very, very good bids. And it's going to mean that we can do other things in the form of demolition and so forth. So this was a good bid for us. Item number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greenwood?
I'll make the motion, see to file proof of publication and notice of a public hearing. That's where the reallocation of $100,000 of Series 2011A bond funds from the fire department projects to be used to install a water main to be used for fire suppressions near businesses along Highway 63 South.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to this item?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number three? A second time.
I'll make the motion to close the hearing.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye. I'm sorry, Mr. Jones.
How much can we really expand out that direction? It's surrounded by concrete plants and...
Well, I'll have no answer, but we have a lot of expansion area out there.
This is going to support?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. There's quite a bit of land out there. We've looked at the area. You know, there's some flood plain further to the west along Blackhawk Creek, but this is along Highway 63, which is being reconstructed this year. This is an industrial area, so we think it's a very good area for light industrial.
Good question, though. Further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adopt resolution to institute proceedings to take additional action and approve the said reallocation.
Second. That's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item number four, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move we receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the issuance of GO bonds not to exceed $750,000 for essential corporate purposes of said city, the proceeds of which bonds will be used to provide funds to pay costs of remediation, replacement, and improvement of property, buildings, equipment, and in public facilities that have been damaged by a disaster as defined in Section 29(c) 2, and that are located in an area that the President of the United States has declared a major disaster, including the relocated Public Works Building slash Central Garage Facilities Centralization Project.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file?
There were not.
Are there, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this item? A second time.
I move that we close the hearing.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
I move adopt a resolution to institute proceedings to take additional action of issuance of said bonds.
Second. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion's carry. Let's do 10 and 11, counsel, please, and then do 12 by itself. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Walper?
Number 10 is a resolution approving recommendation of award of bid to rally appraisal services of Cedar Rapids in the amount of $2,000 for the appraisal of the vacant ground near the intersection of Midport Boulevard and West Airline Highway west of Wagner Road. Number 11 is a resolution approving agreement between the City of Waterloo and the Waterloo Waterworks to share the cost of the West Shallows Road water main extension agreement and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number six, I move to adopt a resolution approving grant application for traffic safety improvements. And six, for $50,000 for the intersection of Downing Avenue and Ainsborough. And seven, for $49,000 for the intersection of Fletcher Avenue and University Avenue. And eight, $39,000 for the intersection of West 11th Street and Ridgeway Avenue. And in nine, approve traffic safety funds application in amount of $15,000 for radio broadcast traffic safety awareness campaign.
Second. Very good. Thank you, Councilman Hart. Well done. Is there questions or comments from counsel on any of those?
No, sir.
That's a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Let's do item 12, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Getty?
I make a motion to a resolution approving a public referendum for a cultural and scientific facilities levy to be held on November 5, 2013, to authorize the imposition of a property tax of 27 cents per thousand of assessed value for the purpose of supporting the annual operating budget of Grouse Museum, doing businesses, Grouse Museum, District Grouse Museum of Imaginarium, Snowden House, and Sullivan Brothers Iowa Veterans Museum to be effective on July 1, 2014.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, does anyone have any questions regarding this? Do we need discussion on this at all? Are we okay?
We're okay.
Okay. Very good. It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Good night for you guys. Let's do 13, 14, and 15, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Cole. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I insist.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, did they wish to speak in regards to this, I think?
Is there anyone that would like to, from the ground, that would like to address counsel or mayor or speak? I know you were here in support. I didn't know if you...
We passed it.
We're just happy.
We're all happy tonight, so good.
Hopefully, elections goes as well.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Gallagher.
He didn't say the Rensselaer Russell House, but it is written here.
Yeah, it's, it is. It will be part of the documentation. Okay, let's do 13, 14, and 15. Ms. Cole?
13 is a resolution approving supplemental agreement number one with AECOM Technical Services in the amount of $35,500 for Fourth Street Bridge and wall repairs and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. 14 is a resolution approving recommendation of award of contract to K Cunningham Construction, Inc., in the amount of $281,273.51 for the FY 2013 Burns Park Drainage Improvements Phase III Contract Number 850. And 15 is a resolution approving contract bonds and certificates of insurance for the FY 2013 Burns Park Drainage Improvements Phase III Contract Number 850 and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. Very good. Thank you, Madam Cole. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding any of those three? It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item 16, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Walper?
Number 16 is a resolution set the date of hearing as August 26, 2013, to approve a request by the City of Waterloo to vacate streets in the Sherwood Park area, including the portions of North Hackett Road, Greenwood Avenue, Woodside Drive, Castlewood Lane, Sandalwood Street, Greenwood Drive, Greenview Drive, Delwood Court, Blackwood Avenue, Forester Avenue, and subject to the retention of utility easements and access easements over the portions of the streets to be vacated, instruct city clerk to publish notice.
Second. Questions? Madam Clerk, please. Roll call.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good. The motion's carry. Could we do 17 and 18, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
In 17, I move to instruct, well, 17 and 18, I move to instruct leisure services to prepare specifications, bid documents, et cetera. For 17, the purchase of 2013 John Deere Skid loaders. And in 18, Young Arena Zamboni Ice Resurfacer purchase.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding 17 or 18? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, for 17 and 18, I move to receive and file specifications, bid documents, et cetera.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, in 17 and 18, I move to adopt a resolution preliminarily approving specifications, bid documents, et cetera.
Second. It's a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Mr. Mayor, in both 17 and 18, I move to adopt the resolution setting date of hearing and bid opening as August 26, 2013, and instruct city clerk to publish notice of specifications, bid documents, et cetera, and taking of bids.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Thank you. Item 19?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greenwood?
I'll make the motion proving change orders number one, two, and three with Peterson Contract, Inc. of Rhinebeck, Iowa, in conjunction with 11 River View Recreation Area Passive Unit Enhancement Phase II. That's contract number 815. For a decrease of $5,125.95 due to modified quantities of silt fence evacuation, topsoil, and seeding, a decrease of $50,653.14 due to modified quantities of stone and mortar, and an increase of $65,429.66 due to contractor furnished riprap, bore, topsoil, and seeding, for a net increase of $9,650.57.
Second. Counsel, do you have questions regarding item 19?